We like to mean is because you could sit and look out the window.
We are on, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, is it done?
We're good, okay. Morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Meeker County Board of Commissioners' regular session for Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge?
Budge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're practicing the heat for winter?
Yeah, mhm. Want to make sure it works.
A email jog.
All right, public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make comment today? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on. County Minister Joe Lutson, is there any changes, additions, or corrections to the agenda?
None today, Mr. Chair.
I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion by Commissioner Olberg, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Art. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Our consent agenda.
Today, we have approval of the September second board meeting minutes. Approval of the Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts payable. Setting the public hearing for the proposed twenty twenty-six fee schedule for December second, twenty twenty-five. Approval of reappointments to the Public Health Advisory Committee. An approval of a memorandum of understanding with AFME Attorney Group for Paid Family Leave. That is the consent agenda.
Are there any questions, or is there any item that you would like moved out of the consent agenda to the regular agenda? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Phil Smalls, our Public Works Director.
Good morning, Phil Smalls, Public Works Director, one item for consideration this morning. Remember last meeting, I came to you with the request to approve our application for a freight funding grant. Similar request today for a transportation economic development grant for the same intersection at Casat thirty-four and the US Highway twelve. Between these two funding applications, we'll have applied for funds in excess of the cost estimate of the project. So we're hopeful if we're successful with one of them, we'll deal with the balance of the remaining funds between the state, city, and the county.
Questions about?
The only question I would have, and that will be to determine what we're actually going to do there. There's nothing in stone about what we're doing, or there is?
As far as what the-
As far as if we're going to have a roundabout, or if we're-
That was the intersection control evaluation that we completed and had the public meeting for.
So that is what we're going to do?
That's what we're proceeding with, with our funding proposals at this point, yes.
Okay, I guess, but I thought some things changed when I read the paper, so.
If we get to the point, when we get to the point of having some funding, that's when we'll start putting agreements together with the city and the state that'll outline details. But until we have funding-
So there can be more discuss- that's, I'm not saying, I'm just curious about that is in stone, that that's what we're going to do.
For me, it is, but if that pushes us against the wall, it's something that could be revisited.
All right, thank you.
When are these grants awarded?
I want to say that Ted, I think both of them are after the first of the year.
Okay.
So early spring, I think we should know on each of these.
Any other questions?
Well, my only conversation is we had people voting in that that really, in my estimation, shouldn't have been a part of it when we had the discussion with the joint meeting. You see what I'm saying?
Mhm.
That's all, so, it'll probably be-
Okay, I would-
Well, we do know that nothing will happen without funds.
Right.
So, but-
There's that.
That being said, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a resolution authorizing Public Works to execute the necessary documents to apply for a grant from the Minnesota Transportation Economic Development Program for the Highway twelve and Casat thirty-four intersection improvement project.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Van Art, is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, Corey.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Art?
Yes.
Commissioner Samke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yep.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Greg Schultz, Land Use Records.
Morning, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director, this morning I've got three items for your consideration. First one is a feedlot expansion for Ruby Dairy, conditional use permit one six six five two. And that is for a property located at five four seven hundred and thirty-eighth, seven thirty-eight, two hundred and tenth Street, Grove City, Minnesota, parcel zero five zero one, zero zero one four zero zero zero. This property has had dairy on it since, the first record I could see on it since pre nineteen eighty, that new dairy parlor. The new milking room was based on the site nineteen eighty, but they've had outside since before that. First CUP we issued was in March of two thousand and five, that was to allow up to seven hundred and fifty animal units. And the CUP was in two thousand and fourteen, that was to construct an eighty by eighty pack barn and a ten by sixteen, a ten concrete liquid neuro collection pit. In August of two thousand and eighteen, there's another CUP issued for that to expand the earthen line manure basin. And then two thousand and twenty-two, they were granted, it went from seven hundred and fifty animal units to four hundred and ninety-six units. Now, this conditional use permit is asking to go from that four hundred and ninety-six animal units to two thousand four hundred and eighty-two animal units, which is seventeen hundred and thirty milking cows and three hundred calves. And they're going to also add a hundred and twenty-two by four hundred and forty-eight freestyle barn and fifty by two hundred calf barn, a hundred and six by a hundred and fifty-two freestyle addition. And they're going to add on to the earthen manure lagoon by three hundred by three hundred and sixty-two feet of area, which will bring that manure basin from about eight million gallons to approximately twenty-one million gallons of volume. So, with that, during the public hearing, Darren Anderson, that's his name from Danielson Township, Dylan Anderson from Danielson Township, addressed the board about concerns about dust control and possible traffic impacts to the road there in front of the dairy. With that, and even before that, we had in place in our conditions of that dust control is going to need to be maintained during construction, and that road maintenance will be, and those gravel roads connecting to that site will need to be maintained at the same time, or put back to its original condition and maintained further after that as well, so. Other than that, there wasn't any other comments from the neighborhood for against this expansion?
I was pleased to see condition number ten, because as you recall, back in twenty-two, Danielson is a small township, not necessarily by number of roads, but more by population and so forth. And so, the fact that they have to put back the road to the condition it was prior to construction is very important to that township, because their funds are, you know, could get exhausted very quickly repairing one road. So, thank you for condition number ten. Any questions?
I have a comment or a question, I guess. So this is just a fact, this is just for this site, not the one down on Highway four, right?
Correct.
This permit is just for that site?
The last permit in two thousand and eighteen affected both. Because they just bought that from Golden Oval, I believe, it was a turkey, chicken facility.
Chicken.
Yep, so now they converted from chicken to cattle down there, now they just have calves down in that facility. That hasn't changed for that. The calf barn that they're going to build on, this one's going to be on this site.
Yep.
It's going to be on this site.
They're going to expand down in the, the one in the bottom corner here, correct?
Down in the southeast corner there, down there, another calf barn like they have.
Yep.
Exactly. Yep.
I've been on this facility, Becker Brothers are, they're Becker Dairy up, and Manana Township, and neighbors does. And then Joe and Vern split with their families as the kids got older, so this is Joe's family, and Vern and his family is up there yet, they've done a lot of work on this site for the course of six, eight years here. And add a new parlor here, just, they've had open houses and stuff, and really nice facility. I don't see any issues, anything to change with this.
No, I was at the site too, uh, two years ago, you know, because one of the folks out there called about the dust control. The day I was there, that truck ran steady the whole time, so they were putting down water to keep the dust down.
Well, no, I don't think there is anybody in the road going up Highway four, is it? This road between the dairy and Highway four?
There's three.
There's other three, okay. But, and then the purchase of that chicken barns too, they did, that was good to get them repurposed and be used again, so they-
Yeah.
They did Danielson Township with the purchase. With that, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Get back to my scroll up here. Move to approve a conditional use permit one six six five two for a two thousand four hundred and eighty-two animal unit feedlot with building expansions in the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter, and the southwest quarter of section two Township one eighteen, range thirty-two, and Danielson Township with the condition.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Art, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries.
Next item I have for you is approval of rezoning permit one six six five zero and preliminary plat application one six six five one for Laughlin Acres. For a property located in northwest quarter, southwest quarter, section eleven Township one nineteen, range twenty-nine Dassel Township. This is on the west side of Little Swan Lake, parcel zero seven zero one eight two zero one zero. Property owners have made application rezon all three point three acres of this parcel, which is currently, is currently A-one Agricultural Preservation District to R-one Suburban Residential District in order to plat a single lot with building eligibility and R-one options. Property owners also made application for consideration, one lot plat. As per survey, the lot meets the minimum width requirements and area requirements. Lot one will be approximately three, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-four square feet, or three point oh six acres. Plus, there's another ten thousand six hundred and fifty-nine square feet, or point two four acres, that'll be part of the right-of-way to the road, access to the lot. This from the existing county state aid for access that is currently being used for the property. Soils have been submitted by Schlabel Enterprises Incorporated, showing it can support both fire and secondary septic systems, contours in the preliminary plat in case surface water will run either same direction as pre-construction, either towards the lake, mostly towards the lake unless there's some sort of major excavation that's done on the property, which isn't planned, since it's just going to be a single residence lot. No stormwater permit would be needed. And then Dassel Township has not, did not comment at the time of the meeting on this rezoning preliminary plat. Title opinion had been submitted on the property and reviewed by county attorney's representative Emily Wood. Comment from attorney Wood on October twenty-fifth. So the title work is satisfactory with direction for taxes to be paid on the property prior to recording.
You had no one at the hearing from the public, the way it looks?
Just the owner.
Okay. Questions for Greg? If not, there are two motions here, one is for the application, one is for the preliminary plat, so.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve rezoning application number one six six five oh to change the three point three acre parcel oh seven dash oh one eight two oh one oh from A-one Agricultural Preservation District to R-one Rural Residential District located in part of section eleven Township one nineteen, range twenty-nine in Dassel Township.
We have a motion by Commissioner Samke, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Olberg, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries, we have a second motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve preliminary plat application number one six six five one for a one lot plat of Laughlin Acres located in part of section eleven Township one nineteen, range twenty-nine in Dassel Township.
We have a motion by Commissioner Samke, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Art, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries.
Last item I have for you is the final plat, application for London Hills addition. Property located in part of government lots two and three, section three Township one nineteen, range twenty-nine in Dassel Township. This is on the west side of Lake Arvila, parcel zero seven zero zero four five zero three zero. Property owners have made application to rezoning plat that was passed by the planning commission back in July of two thousand and fifteen, twenty twenty-five. And the new commissioners have passed this rezoning preliminary plat stage back in August fifth of twenty twenty-five at your commissioners' meeting. Lot one will be a hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet, or three point oh six acres. Lot two will be a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-five square feet, or three point two acres. And lot three will be five hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and seventeen square feet, or thirteen point three three acres. Access to all the lots, one, two, and three will be from the existing Minnesota Highway fifteen. Access that is currently being used for the property, which had been established through nineteen ninety-seven easement. Through the preliminary stages, appropriate soils were, the septic systems were approved, contours. Preliminary plats showed surface water will either run the same direction as pre-construction, either towards the lake or towards the wetland on the property. Was a wetland delineation done on this property, as you see, there's a large wetland on the west side of the property. Therefore, there's a fifty-foot buffer around that for any buildings, that's been established in the preliminary plat. No stormwater permit would be needed since less than one acre would be disturbed during construction. At the time of either of the meetings, or Dassel Township had not commented on this project. Title opinion had been submitted on this property, reviewed by county attorney representative Emily Wood. Satisfactory with direction for taxes to be paid on the property prior to recording.
Questions for Greg? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that to approve the final plat application for a three lot plat of Lundine Hills addition located in part of government lots two and three of section three Township one nineteen, range twenty-nine in Dassel Township.
Motion by Commissioner Samke, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Art, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Our human resources director, Mikel Johnson, is next up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the first item I have for you is to approve MetLife as the county's dental insurance carrier for two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-eight. Our current company that we go through is Humana, and the cost of the premiums is a hundred percent paid by employees. Last year, we received a proposal of a thirty-five percent increase from Humana because we had a high loss ratio, which means that a lot of people were using the plan and they were submitting a lot of claims, and that the amount of premium was no longer covering the amount of the claim. Fortunately, we are able to negotiate down to a ten percent increase with them for two thousand and twenty-five, so we did stay with them, and it was only for a guarantee of one year, so that's why we're back to looking again. And also, because we received our rate information for two thousand and twenty-six from Humana. And again, the increase is high, it's at twenty-seven percent this time. So, with seeing that, our ancillary broker, Integrity, went out and requested proposals from other carriers. And so, the county's health insurance committee reviewed those proposals. And ultimately, the recommendation is to move forward with MetLife. There is an increase, a smaller increase each year, it's a guarantee of three years. There's a small increase each year, so the first year it's seven percent, or eight percent, and then after that, years two and three has a cap of seven percent increase. And with looking at that, there was one other company, Sunlife, that had a decrease. However, what Integrity has experienced in the past is that you'll get it on to the plan with a low rate, and then the next year, you're going to have a higher rate. And so, it doesn't look good for the county then to also be going out and doing proposals again, because then the other companies are really going to start wondering why each year we're going back out and doing proposals, why are we switching around as much? So, the thought is, is that if we went with MetLife and had smaller increases that hopefully stabilized the plan over the course of three years, that we'll be in a better place by that third year versus going with a company that would give us a slight decrease for this year, but then in the future, give us a larger increase, and then hurt our chances of getting good proposals when we're going out and getting, asking for more proposals in the future. So we talked about this as a health insurance committee, and the committee agreed with that. Also, MetLife agreed to include the preventative in the, in just the overall cost of the plan versus taking it out of the benefit. So some of the companies, what they do is they make, so that if the plan overall will pay fifteen hundred dollars on the high plan, you would then have to subtract your costs for going in and getting your cleanings out of that, where MetLife's proposal just includes it, it doesn't come out of that overall benefit that the employee can get, so.
And we have MetLife for, we use them in another one too.
So we have them currently for accident, critical illness, and hospital. We will be moving to them for short term and also paid family.
And just to remind everyone, this service is a hundred percent paid for by the employee?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can you refresh my memory on who's on the insurance committee? And also, do the, are we being, it's paid for by employees, do they have some representation on recommending when we decide to change a policy?
So, the health insurance committee has several different representations on there from different union groups as well. So we, we really strove to get people from all different departments.
So there's staff?
Yeah, so the staff, there's some department heads, and then there's also commissioner on there as well.
And that is-
Yep, and then, of course, Andrew and I.
So, what I'm hearing at Prime West and Oliver is dentists aren't accepting not only Medicaid, but it's become an issue for them to accept dental insurance. Is that true, is that come up with ours?
So, how ours work is it's, I don't know the exact, they call it this percentage of unusual, of usual and customary out of network. So even if a dentist doesn't take MetLife, they're going to cover at least ninety percent of what a carrier that is in the network would cover. So most of the time, employees, when they go to a dentist, even if they don't take MetLife, they're really not going to see a difference between in-network and out-of-network. I'm not sure, is that what you're asking?
I, I think in general, I'm asking, have we heard that dentists in our area are not accepting dental insurance at all? I guess that's kind of a question. Do we know, have we had complaints?
Heard that they're not always necessarily in the network, and so that's the bigger thing, is that they're not always-
So our network is this area here, I'm assuming?
The, the network is, the network changes by carrier, and the, the current dental, sorry, the current dental insurance that we use doesn't include every dentist in town. MetLife is going to be the same thing, but as Mikel said, the way that MetLife then pays is they look at, what do ninety percent of the dentists in, in a service area charge? And as long as this dentist is charging that amount or less, they're going to, they're going to reimburse up to that amount.
I just, I just say it more as a statement, because I think some pressure has to start be putting on some dentists around, so people can get their-
We, we have not heard that-
Well, Paul's laughing, because it really annoys me, like at-
I'm not laughing because of that, because that has been a big discussion.
Because I keep bringing it up, we have Medicaid patients who don't follow their own, that can't get dental care, it's truly ridiculous, so.
We have not heard that issue for the employees who are on the private insurance.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, our broker did say that they will request from anyone we ask to join the network. So, if you have a dentist that is not in the network, we reach out to Mikel, she'd reach out to that broker, and they would see if they'd be interested in joining.
And this is open Danny employee, no matter if they have their health insurance with us or anything? It's just a deduction pre-tax, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, I would look for a motion.
I'll move to approve MetLife as the county's dental insurance carrier for two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and twenty-eight.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Olberg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item I have is to approve the Prime Health insurance rate for non-union employees for two thousand and twenty-six. So we recently received the rates for two thousand and twenty-six from Prime Health. On average, the overall increase across all plans was seven and a half percent, which is higher than we've seen in other years. And so, in the packet, there was a- Is the PowerPoint in this one?
Oh, it's not in there.
So in the packet, it listed out the number of employees on each plan, so you can see that. Then there is a graphic that shows what the difference between what the twenty-five current single rates look like versus what the two thousand and twenty-six rates look like. And then there is a percentage of increase, so you can see on the single plan how much each one has increased. Currently, the county contributes sixteen, one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to the HSA for single plans. And so, for two thousand and twenty-six, that would be increasing to seventeen hundred, as that's what Prime Health is going to across all plans for the single plans. The family plans, the, the rate is based off of the age of the spouse and then the number of children. So the family, so there's two plans, one that is an HSA plan and one that is a non-HSA plan. So the family HSA plan saw an increase of seven percent to the base employee rate. So the county contribution for the family HSA plan would increase from one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars to one twelve hundred dollars per month. That doesn't include the contribution for the spouse and the child, but the county contributes fifty percent of the premium cost for spouses and children. So in your packet, it also shows that the non-HSA plan saw a six point nine percent increase to the base rate. So that increase would be- So that increase would be, the county contribution then would be going from one thousand fourteen per month to one thousand fifty-three per month. Uh, and again, the county also contributes fifty percent for the premium for spouses and children on that plan. Then there's also two charts that I think are good to look at because, because the family plans are based on the age of the spouse and the number of children, I think it's important to know that those numbers themselves are increasing as well. So there's a chart for two thousand twenty-five that shows the current uh, rates. And then there's a chart for two thousand twenty-six that shows those increased rates as well. There is an example as well for what the cost increase would look like for a employee that is forty-three, has a forty-three-year-old spouse and has two children. Uh, so you can see what that difference looks like as well. Currently, the county also contributes to that family HSA plan, the HSA contribution. So currently in two thousand twenty-five, it's thirty-nine hundred. And then it would be to stay in line with what we've been doing, which is we've done uh, an additional fifty dollars per month over what other counties have done. That would then increase to four thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-six, to keep in line with what we've been doing. Uh, this would be the same as what we've negotiated with union employees, so what you'd be approving today would just be for non-union. And I think that's everything I have for that.
Questions for Mikel.
So, I always get lost in all these numbers, but do we, when I was on negotiations, one thing, when it increased, we normally paid fifty percent of the increase, are we?
Correct, on the base.
It's exactly, so it's, it's based on the change of the Emerald Plan, which is the lowest cost plan.
The Emerald Plan.
Fifty percent of that, the county picks up. So in this case, the, the change in the Emerald Plan was eighty dollars and eight cents per month. So the county's contribution goes up by forty dollars and four cents, the employee's contribution goes up by forty dollars and four cents.
So it's like even still.
And yes, that is the way that it's done. We, we have heard concern through negotiations about the cost of our plans to employees. Um, you know, as you look at the, the Emerald Plan, in twenty-five, the monthly cost is fifty-six dollars and twenty cents. In twenty-six, it's ninety-six dollars and twenty-four cents per month, so it's a significant increase from what they were paying in twenty-five. It, one of the things that we committed when we were doing negotiations was that we would take a look at how we do um, the county's contribution. Uh, and have conversations with the insurance committee about that in advance of negotiations next year.
The single plan is still pretty cheap for a single, with what's out there, I think, but when I look at families, I'm scary.
Um, yes, we, we know that um, every county, every employer does the, their contributions to insurance differently. You know, the way that we do the change is not necessarily uncommon, uh, but there are others who, you know, they ensure that that lowest cost plan is no cost to the employee, and those are things that we hear at the negotiating table. So we committed that we would take a look at that, uh, the plan is that we're gonna do that over the winter in preparation for negotiations for next year. Uh, and we'll have conversations with this board as we go into that. But obviously, the challenge that we face is that the more that the, the county takes on insurance costs, the, the employees take on, but the county is taking on that cost then. Um, when we've had those conversations with employee groups, you know, I've always said, and still believe that there's, at least for the past several years, there's been more value in investing in wages rather than insurance. So that's where we've, you know, advocated to put the money um, when we go through negotiations, but also as we look at um, what the best way to expend our resources is. So these are things that we all have to balance as we go through this process, but it's something we're gonna have to do.
I'm guessing what you hear is the increase you're giving me isn't covering, covering the insurance and the, you know, the costs of inflation, et cetera, which is, it's an issue for sure.
I was on a um, meeting yesterday and they don't have their actual rate yet. But the company told them it's gonna be somewhere between twenty-three and twenty-eight percent.
Yeah, we're not, this is high for us, but it's not high for.
Yeah.
Yeah, nationwide, private insurance, um, employee-sponsored private insurance, it sounds like the average is going up about six and a half percent. So we're very much in the ballpark there. Uh, we have certainly seen other groups who have had significantly larger insurance increases than we've experienced. That's the value of the, the Prime Health pool that we've been able to really take advantage of over the years, as we've had really stable rate increases. And that's because of the um, the fact that we collectively with the other groups who are part of it are owners of it. We are able to make those decisions then of, you know, how should that money be invested? We can see how much is coming in and then we know, well, this is exactly how much needs to go out.
The second nice thing about Prime Health is we get that rate early enough, it can be a part of the budgeting process.
Yes.
So the, the meeting I was on yesterday, that's the last element, last, one of the last three elements to finishing the budget. And they're probably not still gonna get that in another month.
And I'm assuming they, that they have some high, I mean, what, that is higher than we normally have got, that they have some high claims or?
Yeah, pretty much, um, our, what we've seen this year uh, is a higher utilization in the first two quarters. Normally, that's where we're making bank for the last two quarters. And this year, we had far more utilization.
Twenty-four, there were some really high claims that impacted the, the equity that, that we had. Um, which then rolls over to twenty-five, as twenty-five is not as robust of a year as, we were hoping that it would be. Pharmacy costs is one of the big drivers.
One of the things that.
Yeah.
That's one of the things they talk about at Prime West, the pharmaceutical costs have gone up, and the claims have gone up. So more people are either going to the doctor or.
Yeah.
Maybe we're getting some things back that we thought should've come sooner after COVID when nobody was going anywhere, so. But it's kind of eye-opening is all I'm saying, so appreciate your work ethic.
In these health savings account plans, does the contribution to the health savings account cover the deductible?
No, not entirely.
Okay.
So I think, so the overall deductible on the um, on the single plans, the ones that are HSA, the max out-of-pocket sixty-nine hundred, but then depending on the plan, some of the different plans have um, a contribution that starts after the HSA and then before, so then the deductible kicks in after that. Um, I can show you our illustrations if you'd like to see them sometime, so you can see what they look like.
Are, are staff generally happy with the insurance?
I hear mixed reviews, um, of course, the, the thought is always that it's expensive. Um, so like Andrew talked about, that's something that we're, we've told them that we are looking into. Uh, I do hear concerns about some, what they all cover sometimes as far as um, I had someone reach out about some of the different mental health things that they were covering. Uh, but we do work directly with our rep and Ask, and so she's been really great about researching and looking into claims. And she can work directly with the employee and they can um, see exactly what's happened, and she always is more than happy to dig into it. So if there are concerns, we at least really make sure that we research and look into them. Sometimes they're still not what the employee would like, but at least we can get answers.
You're getting someone on the telephone to address the issue that you don't get.
Yes, absolutely.
Cause I don't think it's any different than any other Blue Cross or anybody else, but I'm hoping the service is better.
On the flip side, I have an employee that's been going through some pretty major um, health issues. And they actually said, you know, I hear other people complain, but I've seen nothing but really great service, I've had really good experience. So you kind of hear a mix of both things.
Well, it's gonna be interesting in the future if it keeps going this way for sure.
The one thing that is nice though, you know the person who you're calling, you know you're talking to Leah.
Yeah, Leah's great.
And a bigger company, you may never get the same person to answer a question twice.
She emails directly back, she will email the employee, there's a lot of people that, when you're working with a company, they will not even communicate with the member. They will only communicate with me, um, she communicates, she'll take phone calls from that, I mean, she's, she's wonderful.
It has something to do with being an owner.
Any more questions for?
What, on, on that piece, on the kind of the perception piece, I just wanted to add quick, you know, pulled up really quickly um, in twenty-twenty-four through the end of the year, so if we have sixty-nine hundred dollars is the deductible, eighty-one percent of people spent, their, their total claims were less than sixty-nine hundred dollars. So if you have preventative care, obviously that's covered, but if you have anything else, it's being picked up by the deductible. So as we all know, it often doesn't feel like, well, the insurance is doing anything for me when I'm having to pay that full cost, cause it's still in the deductible. It's why the value of the HSA contribution that the county makes um, is so great, because that is money that we are putting into a, a tax-benefited account for the employee. They have the option to put money in there as well, if they're using the insurance throughout the year, if they're using less than sixty-nine hundred, or less than being contributed, then they build wealth over time, which was one of the real goals that Prime Health had as well, was to help build employee wealth. And um, we've seen presentations in the past at the board where they show, you know, what the total HSA balances were when the pool started versus what they are, and you know, aggregate-wise, it has definitely grown so.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Prime Health insurance rates for non-union employees for two thousand twenty-six.
We have a motion by Commissioner Van Orde, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Olberg, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you, Mikel.
Good morning.
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 Here I am, Parks Manager, I am here to do the annual parks report. And in the first half of the report, I'm just gonna kind of breeze through it because it's just a brief overview of some of the amenities, just to remind people of what we have out there in the park system. So to start off, we have shelters available for rent, um, they're also free to use, it's, it's up to you, if you have events, it's usually better to rent. Uh, there's eighteen in total throughout all the ten parks in the system. And then we've been rebuilding them as we go along too, because a lot of those units have aged out. And then the other thing we offer is restrooms in all of the parks, uh, they're a heavy-duty concrete, they double as a storm shelter, uh, if anyone happens to be caught out there at any time. And there's sixteen of those throughout the parks as well. And some of the parks have multiple restrooms, that's why there's so many of them out there. And as far as uh, we have been building new playgrounds and play equipment, and as you can tell in the budget for next year, we're looking at building another new one out at West Ripley Park. And then just various outdoor recreational activities, whether it's sports courts or the, the landing, swimming areas, docks, horseshoes, you name it. We have ball fields, volleyball courts, uh, disc golf is kind of a unique one we have out there, nine-hole.
Where is the disc golf?
That is down at Cosmos, so it's at Thompson Park.
So do we have, I was in when we started this, remember?
Mm-hmm.
The interest is, does it get used a lot?
It does, yes, it actually, I know when we had first put it in, we had kind of thoughts on if it would be used and actually.
This is gonna be interesting, we had a few people interested and we picked up the ball and went with it, but my grandchildren play it a lot.
Yep, it's very popular, actually, anytime anyone's out there, like on lunch breaks and stuff, people will swing out there, there's some tournaments that are held out there as well.
You also get a lot of cooperation from the Lions down there, um, they help out with some of these things and.
They're a very active group.
We had some active people when we started this, Braden did a good job of taking them.
And then we had a, we had a nice volunteer group out there too, which really helped with this project.
They were like scratching our heads going, disc golf, okay, but there you go.
Something we've never experienced.
But how many years ago was that now, it's a while.
I wanna say that was probably back in twenty-fifteen, I wanna say.
That's how long I've been.
So, well, it's held up really nice, the only thing I have to do is replace some of the, we have signs on there showing you how the course runs. And just from the sun and elements and stuff, so we'll have to replace those, but that's kind of minor, after all these years.
If you're ever traveling seven, I try to get to a lot of our parks, but if you're ever traveling seven, just a little bit west of Cosmos, uh, it's a great park.
Mm-hmm.
It's big.
Beautiful, yeah, the problem we're having out there is there's uh, oak quilts going on. So in most of the forests out there is an oak, and that's part of the beauty of the parks, we've had to salvage a lot of that. But on the flip side, we can use that at the campground for firewood, so we have quite a massive stockpile as we go.
I did disc golf in nineteen eighty-six in Grand Forks and I.
Did you really?
Oh, I hadn't seen it again till the last five years or so, but it's, I know my oldest daughter did in Utah, it, it's huge.
I had never heard of it till they came.
It's kind of like pickleball, there was a big surge since, you know, many decades ago, and then it died, and then now it's back, unfortunately. And just some more examples there, uh, trails, we do have twenty-one total miles of trails throughout the parks. Some are paved, most of them are just gonna be like a dirt surface or grass. And then we have just a variety of them running along the lakes, through the forest, open meadows, you name it. They get utilized, uh, obviously hiking, horseback riding, and then in the winter, we do groom a lot of the trails uh, for snowshoeing and cross-country skiing out there. And that totals about, uh, we maintain about sixteen miles of that in the winter, being fully taken care of and groomed. And then we have multiple fishing piers throughout the parks, um, we're looking at eventually maybe adding one to the Coronas Regional Park, it seems like a popular request out there. So that's something we will look at in the future and hopefully get some DNR assistance with. And then we do have a variety of boat landings in the parks, um, we work in tandem with the DNR on these, so they help us with major replays to like the, everything like that. And we'll donate uh, material for like the rock for packing and all that kind of stuff, and the docks are typically owned by us. And then of course, we have the campground, forty-three sites out there, three cabins, looking to add a fourth uh, in the upcoming years. And uh, very popular as we've been making the updates over the years, such as the uh, new shower facility. Guess it's not new anymore, it's a couple of years old, but to me, it's new. So very nice facilities out there, we have a storm shelter on site as well, so now with that new restroom, we actually doubled the capacity that we can support for people if there's a storm, which did happen this year. And then one unique thing that we don't necessarily always include as part of our park system is the Forest City Stockade. But just so everybody is aware, the county does own that and it technically is part of the park system. So we have a massive volunteer group of about a hundred and twenty people out there and uh, uh, their own board that kind of we let take care of this. And the county steps in and insists in certain times, uh, we insure it, so I annually inspect and insure it and make updates that way. Uh, but the property is owned by Eager County.
And don't they do a great job?
They do, very popular, I heard they had another uh, kind of record-breaking year out there.
Which surprised with the weather the way it was.
Absolutely.
I think people, it's such a gem to have, you travel all over and not see anything.
Once the rain stopped, the people just.
Yep, and there's so many buildings out there now too, a lot of people were, you know, took shelter and then kind of caught up. But it's amazing, over the years from when I started, there was only a few buildings out there, now it is a full-blown city.
It is.
And there's a large number of people who come to the encampment.
Yeah.
That weekend and stay the whole week, actually.
Yep, absolutely, a lot of those, what they call the buckskinners and the tents out the backside, they'll, they'll come at the beginning of the week and camp out in the parking lot. Cause across the road, the county actually owns the parking area there too. So yeah, very popular, and to get a hundred and twenty volunteers, I think is mighty impressive these days, so very rare.
Well, we don't own the threshers.
That was my question.
And then here's just a few images of some of the natural areas we have out there, wildflower plantings and just kind of open areas for people to enjoy. And then moving on to uh, next, uh, this year's CIP items, um, we'll be looking at putting steel roof and siding and then a new serving counter at the large shelter at West Ripley Park. Um, I obviously have to wait until the season's done for rentals and everything before we can move forward with that. That's very much likely something I'll need to come to the board and get approval for, cause I think it'll be fairly costly on there, but we do have it budgeted for this year. Um, and then for Coronas, we decided to wait on the utility vehicle purchase until the end of the season, just to keep hours off of everything. And then trade that in and have it fresh for next year then, it was. And then we also have to wait till the camping season is done to continue adding gravel and material to all the roads out there, just for interference purposes.
Brady, how, how much longer does the camping season go?
What's that?
How much longer does the camping season go?
End of September.
End of September, so.
And then here's a kind of series of how the camping revenue has gone over the years. And uh, as you can see, we've had a fairly steady increase in things, uh, this year, we're right on par to be up there. Last year was an amazing year for it, the weather was kind of perfect for everything, so tons of people were camping out there. And the firewood sales, they stayed pretty steady, this year, we had some effects, uh, because all the. And the firewood sales, they stayed pretty steady. This year, we had some effects because of all the rain, as everybody can imagine, so the firewood sales are a bit down. Camping, it's been very good, but then you do have some cancellations because some of those weekends, we just had storms and rain and people just leave and different things like that. So, it's one of those, it is very weather dependent on everything. But still, we're doing very well out there. And these fees will continue to come in until October, so there's a delay on everything. So, even after the season is closed, we will still be getting some revenue as it catches up. And then as far as the shelter rentals and fees go, it's kinda the same situation where we had some really boom years, but because of all the storms and rain in the beginning of the season, we actually had about two months where there were no reservations, which is highly unusual. So, May and June, there was very few reservations out there and then it has picked up since then and even into this fall, we have quite a bit. So, I do expect that to increase some and same with the revenue for it. One thousand fifty collected right now currently and that's for Coronas and then one thousand one hundred and twenty for the General Parks. And this is the same thing. We seem to get checks and payments monthly after the shelter reservations and whatnot. So, likely into November, we'll still be receiving payments and adding to this number then, so it will increase. But all in all, again, the rain affected the reservations, so there's a lot of cancellations this year just because all of a sudden three inches of rain came up and people didn't wanna be on those open air shelters, so can't blame them.
We didn't have, it was cold.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Start of the season.
At the start of the season, between all of that. So, all those things combined made it, so it, it did have an effect on everything.
And it refreshed my memory. Do we have the ability to make reservations online?
Not currently, because we're having trouble with the people that wanna have like weddings or large events. They need to talk to somebody.
Okay.
And we don't have the staff to constantly monitor that. So, it's typically just calling an email and to be honest with you, the majority of reservations go to the extension office with Kayla's assistants out there.
And they're still, they're still doing that.
Yep, yep. And even the payments, they're so used to her being there that they just drop them off and everything and then just pick them up, so. It's worked pretty well. Then I thought I would talk about, 'cause it was a major event out at the Coronas Regional Park. We had a massive storm that was centralized at basically only the south side of Lake Coronas. There was very little damage anywhere else, but that south side got hit. Not only the park, the campground, but all of the people who lived along that. There was all the boats and docks and boat lifts were all flipped over. Ours was damaged, as you can see there. We had to replace two of the side posts. They snapped off in there. And then we lost roughly about thirty-eight, not including what's in the woods, full-sized trees and they were all uprooted is what happened. So, straight line wind came off from the north and everything was facing one way. So, we had major damage out there. One camper, one seasonal camper got hit. Fortunately, nobody was in it. There's a few trees that landed on that. Our woodshed, as you can see, got mushed. There's actually three trees there. I know it's hard to see, but it completely crushed a half of that. And then our shop out there also had a tree fall on. It held up pretty well, but some of the roofing will have to be replaced. And then also, don't have it on there, but our solar water heating system got hit and it snapped one of the panels on there. Strange thing was, there was zero debris around it. So, I have no idea what actually hit it and took it out. But, so that was some pretty serious stuff and it was all hands on deck trying to get the campground open, 'cause we had people rolling in daily. And so, we focused on the campground first, took all of that out. I did have to hire an emergency tree service to get the trees that were on all the facilities off there. And then we had some widow makers that we just couldn't deal with and twisted up trees, so we do have a very expensive bill from there, but I'm working on insurance to help hopefully cover some of it. I'd love it if they'd cover most, but I believe it'll be a percentage-based thing on there, so we will have a bill coming up on that.
So, Brady, does Sterns then come and also assist with?
If I ask them to, they do. They're very good to work with. In fact, I'm having them come out to help. Since everything was uprooted, we should be able to just pull the stumps out and they have the equipment for that. So, I've already scheduled that with them. Since we did the majority of the tree work, they're gonna come out and assist us with that.
Good.
And of course, there's no extra charge or anything. That's just part of us working together out there. So, we do have a very good working relationship with them. So, and then they just have overall more staff and everything. And then Highway actually assisted with a couple of trees too and they chipped it up with us and did a few things to help us out there too, since they were in the area. So...
Is that MCA, MCA T we were?
Yep, and they, as far as the tree service goes, I mean, the facilities are gonna be the replacement costs and everything on there. But the tree service, I was told that they do a percentage based off the value of the property that was damaged. So, I got one check already for the shelter and then we're in talks with the kinda other damage out there, so. But yeah, that was, I didn't think I'd see a storm like this. Back in twenty twelve, there was a Father's Day storm that had forty-two, forty-two trees that had went down between the park and campground. Almost identical situation. The only thing that happened there is we didn't have any buildings damaged. But again, campers were, and vehicles were damaged out there and everything, but I didn't think we'd see another storm like this, especially back-to-back, so.
Stop, brother.
So, between this and then the previous day before that, we had a lot of storm damage at the Finnish Memorial Park in Kingston, Shaw Park in Forest City and then some at Clear Lake, so.
Your wood supply is increasing.
Yeah.
So, what we did with a lot of these, obviously, we're keeping all the oak and stuff for firewood, but like all the basswoods, we just got rid of that. It's, we'll never use it in time. It's gonna rot, so. So, I just wanted to inform everyone, not that it's a very fun thing to talk about, but just so everybody's aware. And then I just wanted to, on a happier note, talk about some of the park projects we've been doing and these are just examples of those brand-new signs that we had put up that are basically zero maintenance out there. And I just wanted everyone to see them and they come with a pretty big cost, but their life expectancy is very long. And again, I said maintenance-free, so we really won't have to do anything with them now that we're out. And some of them redesigned and landscaped around them. And then that picture of that pier there, that's down at Thompson Park and Cosmos, and that needed to be redecked, so we did a redecking on that as well. And then...
Hire people for that or do you do it?
We did that.
You do that?
Yep, yep. So, a lot of the, if we can handle a lot of the construction ourselves, we will do it.
That's nice.
Good.
Certain items, we obviously have to contract out.
Looks good.
Where we can, we'll do it. And then also, another nice note is this just got finished, cooperative landing repairs with the Lake Francis Lake Association. So, a few years ago, we discovered that the county actually owns that property. That's the only landing outside of a park that we actually own as a county. And the association out there, they've been really good to work with. They reached out to me this year. The DNR and I, we put in new planking out there, so that's good, but the site, the parking site, was very eroded. I mean, and there was a stump in the middle of it and all this stuff. So, we went fifty-fifty on the project with the Lake Association and then we, the picture here is the rebuilding of all the gravel and laning and everything. And what you can't tell is this is a very steep apron that's going down there. And what's happening is the water continually erodes and so what we did is extended the asphalt on that apron to avoid that. And that just got completed last week, so. So, that is a very nice thing to have done like that, 'cause it's not often that we have these cooperative projects. It was good that, I felt it was good that, to create that between us. Any questions on anything or something else that you would like me to cover?
I don't have a question, but I appreciate all the work you and your staff do. It's a reminder when we look at this. We have a lot of beautiful parks and we do.
I think it shocks people to know how many.
It is, yeah. And, you know, we want people to stay healthy and it's our benefit when they do, so everything we do here is... So, my compliments to you.
Thank you.
You and your staff. Please do that. Thank you.
And if you ever have small projects where, you know, like our Lake Association, we've got some money, we'd be happy to help with some of them.
Sure.
Send their money away again, Paul.
No, but that sounds good, Paul. Keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna say the same thing. I think some of it, like the golf things too, if there's some of these parks, like just Clear Lake and things, you know, I think a lot of the local legions and Lions Clubs and stuff will participate in some of those improvement things. So, if there's something on your thought process or whatever that
Last year.
Take a little time to, to put together, you know, if they know about it, they'll start.
They...
And most associations.
We give to that all the time, that kinda thing. And I'm sure you guys do too.
Yeah. Another thing that is, thing that I, you know, the Cosmos area, I don't know how much, how big that park is, but with that, with that power line down in that neighborhood, it's gonna come right through there real close.
Yeah.
Something to consider, there would be a solar opportunity on some of that land, the whole ta, that then the tax base gets the credit for the solar versus individual people. It's all taxpayers, just a thought.
Mm-hmm. How big is that park?
Twenty-three acres.
Twenty-three?
That looks so big because we maintain all twenty-three acres.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not like other parks where we just kinda live in the woods or something like that.
But if there was five acres or so, I mean, it'll take a while, but it generates income for everybody, then.
Good idea.
And as we look at, at the addition of new playground equipment on Lake Ripley, maybe the Lake Association or, you know, the campers across the road could contribute to that as well?
They are definitely in my sights for...
Wonderful.
When we did the Legion, when we did the Legion Park, that was a community, I don't think, I mean,
Right.
Everybody, do you remember? Everybody just got to be a thing and they did a great job.
We donated tools from our business and...
Equipment and labor.
People's time.
People are very willing to help.
They are.
And as another example, and like you were saying there too, Steve, is last year, a lot of those groups donated towards those AEDs. And I think the park board wants us to continue doing that. And I think our next focus is West Ripley because of the volume of people.
Yep, yes.
So, that kinda thing. And then with the cabin I mentioned for Coronas, I'm in talks with the school in Painesville and their shop. Teacher is willing to basically construct that for us and then we can...
Fantastic.
So, we can save some money that way as well. And it's just a good cooperative project.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Brady?
Oh, that was good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And make sure you thank your staff that...
I will, yes.
We appreciate all the hard work.
Absolutely.
We have a good group out there, so that helps out a ton.
Yeah. Great.
Ah, on to a fun discussion. We need to talk about establishing our two thousand and twenty-six preliminary levy. I believe our administrator is going to lead that discussion.
I would be more than happy to, Mr. Chair. So, this is the, the next step in our budget process. As, as the board is well aware, we've had a couple of work sessions to go through the budget and, and we're at the point now of adopting the preliminary levy. So, I have a presentation here that I'll run through. All of it is information that you have seen before, but for, for the sake of the public and for the sake of a reminder for yourself, we'll, we'll go through it. So, first and foremost, when we talk about the budget, what we're really talking about is, is a combination of various funds with different funding sources. One of our major funding sources is property tax and therefore, it's one of the, the main responsibilities of this board is to adopt the property levy on an annual basis. We also receive money from state and federal sources and fees for service. You know, we just had a presentation from our Parks Manager here talking about the Coronas Campground and we obviously receive fees for that and that offsets then the levy cost that goes to support that facility. There are a number of funds that make up the budget. Our general revenue, road and bridge, human services, parks, solid waste, regional library, opioid settlements, family services building or now government center, capital projects and debt service funds are primarily the ones that we talk about. When we look at, you know, some, some positives about our budget and some of our challenges, the real positives that we have are that we have a really healthy fund balance, which helps provide us with some opportunities to, to be able to tackle some of the challenges that we have without having to increase the levy as much as we would otherwise. We've really engaged county staff and elected officials. We had a really good set of discussions going through the budget. We had really responsible budgets that our department heads brought forward to start with, which made some of the conversations that we had very difficult later on because there wasn't as obvious of areas that we could make adjustments. The county maintains a really modest debt level. Two thousand and twenty-six, we have the final payment on our two thousand and twenty-one refunding bond. So, looking forward to having that final payment occur and no longer have that on the books. And then lastly, our county roads are very well maintained. So, we look at some of the challenges. The big things that are really impacting us going forward are the state and federal cost shifts and unfunded mandates that are coming towards us, many of which will impact us two thousand and twenty-seven, but are, are having an impact on the twenty-six budget and how we make our decisions related to that. We have a reduction in county program aid by about fifty thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-six, not because of anything that was done in St. Paul, but because of the way the formula works. You know, the formula really benefited us in twenty-five. Twenty-six is not benefiting us and so it goes.
So, what is the amount of money we get for that?
It's one point five-ish million dollars.
And last year was one of the higher years.
Yes, we had saw a little over a hundred thousand dollar increase going into two thousand and twenty-five and we're seeing a fifty thousand dollar decrease.
They give us and they take us back.
Yes. We have lagging non-levy revenue, which I'll talk about in a little bit. We have, one of the unfunded mandates that's starting to impact us in twenty-six is paid family medical leave. As we talked about earlier today, we have increased health insurance costs. We have limited growth in our tax capacity, which means that we don't have, you know, a lot of new development, which we can tap into and, you know, keep our tax rate the same while bringing in additional levy dollars. And our transportation funding remains a challenge. As we've talked about, the, the state funding that we receive is fantastic, but it's not keeping up with costs. We have some projects that are coming down the pike that are gonna require us to look at some other funding sources or, or require that we change the, the rate at which we do those projects. As I mentioned, our, our non-levy revenue is, is lagging. What this chart here shows is over a five-year, five complete years and two budgets. The orange is our human services fund and the blue is the general fund. This is our non-levy, as a, non-levy revenue is a percent of total expenses. And generally, what it shows is that, that non-levy revenue is flat or is declining. Be anything from fees for service, but primarily, it's state and federal funds that are coming towards us. And what this means is that our expenses are growing at a faster rate than that other revenue sources is, which means that there's only one other place for us to, to get revenue and that's property tax. County program aid is a, a great example of that. You know, this is twenty-five years of history. The blue is the actual dollar amount that we've received for county program aid. And then the orange is the CPA is a percent of our levy. You can see that twenty-five years ago, CPA was around twenty-two and a half percent of our levy and today, it's around seven and a half percent. And, you know, the CPA, the intent of it is general purpose aid. It's intended to help cover those unfunded mandates that the, the state develops when they don't put specific funding sources on there.
So, you know, our budget is also increased, right? So, when you look at... Staff is increasing. It's just not fair to, not that I'm defending it, but seven percent, there's, there's a lot that goes into that, is what I'm saying, right?
But I would argue though, is that as, there's always gonna be a natural growth in costs because things, you know, with inflation, things cost more over time. With, when we don't see that, that revenue keep up with it, there's only one other place for us to go to maintain the level of services.
I agree. I'm just saying, it's just not as simple as, you know, we did better when we were getting whatever, but our expenses, so. Look at how the budget has gone.
So, as we look forward into coming years, you know, as we've talked about many times before, we have these unfunded mandates and we have these new cost shifts that are coming towards us. Paid family medical leave is coming in two thousand and twenty-six. In two thousand and twenty-six, we are also gonna see a portion of a reduction in the administrative allocation that we receive to administer SNAP benefits, the supplemental nutritional aid program. Because counties administer SNAP on behalf of the states, we receive the, at least a portion of the fifty percent administrative share that the federal government provides. That's gonna be reduced down to twenty-five percent. In addition, in twenty-seven, we're gonna, in October of twenty-seven, we're gonna start to see a cost shift on benefits. If, and it's calculated based on error rate, it's, it's complicated, whatnot, but we anticipate that we're gonna start to see a portion of that cost come towards us at the end of two thousand and twenty-seven and then fully impact us in two thousand and twenty-eight.
On the SNAP costs, if I could, Andrew. One of the, one thing that's being looked at or discussed at, at AMC is, you know, in the day and age we're at and the way the, the tools that we have to administer... you know, in the day and age we're at and the way, um, the, the tools that we have to administer SNAP that we could cut counties out and you could, and then the state could administer SNAP and cut a person out of, through your phone. You could, you know, with apps and the different tools that are out there, uh, IT-wise, to maybe this is something that the state administers. And, and, uh, to cut out some of the extra steps and extra processes. So that's, that's an area that's gonna be explored, I think, on the SNAP side.
Um, additionally, in the federal reconciliation bill, there was, um, changes to, uh, how Medicaid needs to be administered, Minnesota, we call them medical assistance. Uh, there's additional requirements that's gonna be, uh, placed on our staff as far as verifications and the frequency in which they need to perform those verifications. Additionally, the, uh, Minnesota African-American Family Preservation Child Welfare Disproportionality Act, uh, is going to implementation in, um, January 1st of 2027. And the big unknown is disability waivers. One of the big discussions that we had going through this last legislative session was cost shifts that were proposed on disability waivers. Uh, it was a significant amount of money that would be coming towards the counties. What the compromise that was found in St. Paul is that they created a work group to look at other solutions. But if they don't come up with solutions, then by, I think, 2028, um, the cost shifts go into place for counties. So that is a real possibility that we're gonna have that come down the road at us also. Twenty-six, uh, we anticipate the, the total cost of these to be about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in new costs to the county. Twenty-seven is one point one million dollars and 28, it's, um, around two seventy-five plus the potential for the disability waivers. As we look at this, of course, the, um, the total actual new cost to us in 26 is not as significant as is in the out years. But as we look at the strategies that we want to do to have a lower levy in 26, um, we can see what's coming in 27 and it causes, it gives us some pause in once. Uh, so we wanted to address it in that, in a different way. So how are we addressing this? Uh, first and foremost, the budget committee's recommendation, what we discussed at the work session, uh, is that the, we're gonna front-load as much of a levy increase as we possibly can, uh, to not, and then also not reduce, um, our overall service levels. So the goal is to have the largest levy increase in 26. Our current estimates for the out years are that, um, with these new costs and our ongoing expenses, that future levy increases would be below nine percent. But of course, all of that is subject to change in the event that, um, those estimates become inaccurate for one reason or another, or because of new things that come our way, all of those sorts of things. I will continue to say, that's where we believe we are today. Please don't hold me to that in the event that that number doesn't come in perfectly.
You don't want that as part of your review.
Ideally not.
A good, a good thing to, to point out at this point in the conversation is last year, we were looking at, I believe, a four point five.
Yeah.
For this year, so then we're at double that. So I mean, action today is hard, difficult because you don't know what's coming, but.
The crystal ball seems fuzzy.
And twice in the legislative, uh, proposals the other day at the Fall Policy Conference, a representative stated that we need to raise more revenue. So we're not even done with the old revenue that you raised.
Yep.
They maybe don't understand how this all works.
One, one question I have, Andrew, is we have discussed a potential, uh, local sales tax to help us with, um, road, road costs, I believe? Is that part of?
It is not included in the budget right now. We're gonna have a conversation next week at the work session to continue that conversation.
My apologies, we're always looking at new revenue sources and.
Well, what that means is they wanna do what they're doing and then put all the onus on us to take care of the problem. And we're gonna discuss it, so I don't wanna go down that, but it'd be, you know, I thought about it and I'm like, we're doing this and then we're gonna add a sales taxes here too. That's kinda scary to me.
I'm not, yes.
But we're gonna have a discussion.
We are gonna have a discussion.
Yes.
It, it is.
Save that for the discussion.
It is certainly tied in with the budget, but it is a separate conversation with the budget. We haven't included any, um, any forecasts or revenue or expenses that would relate to that in the 2026 budget.
Okay.
Um, we do continue to evaluate our existing program services and our partnerships, uh, as we talked about in our last work session two weeks ago. Uh, we, we significantly reduced several, uh, contributions and appropriations. We removed several projects from the budget in order to minimize the amount of cash that we're using, uh, to reduce the levy a bit. Uh, and, you know, we're, we're always looking across everything to, to make sure that we're doing things in, um, in the best way possible. Uh, we are continuing to seek opportunities to recoup costs. Uh, one of the things that we're, uh, doing as part of our, our fee schedule update is ensuring that the fees that we are charging are actually covering the costs of the things that we are, um, that people are paying for us to do for them. Uh, we are looking to continue to do, uh, continuous improvement in our HHS billing processes, ensuring that, uh, the information that we are, um, submitting for billing is accurate the first times. We don't need to rebuild multiple times. Uh, and ensuring that the, um, we are billing for all of the programs in which we have the ability to bill for. Uh, that's one of those areas of non-levy revenue, that if we can maximize that, in the long run, it reduces the, the total impact in which, um, we have on the levy. And then lastly is to update and create new service contracts with partner agencies. This is making sure that where we are, um, providing a service for, um, a partner that we're working with, that again, that cost is being adequately covered. Um, or we're at least having those conversations about what subsidies are we providing and then we're going into that clear-eyed. Uh, we're continuing to embrace opportunities for efficiencies, uh, to minimize the impact of new mandates. Always looking at technology, always looking at how we do our work, always looking at are there, um, are there bumps in the road that we are creating with process that takes more time? What are the things that we can streamline? And that's one of the things our, our management team is consistently looking at. Uh, and, you know, as I noted on here, we have no new positions in 2026, uh, in order to help ensure that we are, um, you know, able to do the work that we are being asked to do with our current staff. And then lastly, as Commissioner Schmidt has mentioned a couple of times, we're gonna continue to pursue legislative advocacy and that can be in a, a wide variety of ways, um, but ultimately with the, the goal to ensure that the policies that are being proposed, either in Washington or St. Paul, are being implemented in a thoughtful way that has, um, does not have undue impact on our taxpayers. All of that is to say, we are moving well along on the schedule of the budget. Uh, we are currently at the approval of the preliminary budget and levy. Uh, the next steps that we would have is, uh, the truth and taxation notices get mailed out in November. And then, uh, December 2nd, the first meeting in December, we are gonna have our truth and taxation hearing in the evening and then potentially, uh, adopt the final levy and budget at that time.
Merry Christmas.
Yes. So, uh, uh, these numbers have been slightly updated based on the conversations that we've had, um, at the August and September work sessions. Uh, but bottom line, total expenses, uh, across the entire budget is forty-five million, five hundred seventy-nine thousand, a hundred and fourteen dollars, which is a five point three million dollar reduction from 2025. And that reduction, um, largely comes from less, uh, road construction costs in the road bridge fund as well as us being finally done with the remodel project.
Wonderful.
Uh, this slide just shows you that everything balances out, that we have revenue, that we are really showing sufficient revenue to cover all of those expenses. Uh, we do have transfers that occur between the different funds, which we'll talk about, as well as fund balance used to make everything balance. As we look at how do we, uh, use those funds, uh, 50% of our total costs is personnel services. Uh, 34% is services and charges, so our, our contractual costs, uh, 4% is supplies and 12% is capital outlay. So those are our, our major projects that, um, and our one-time expenses, equipment purchases, vehicles, all of that. Looking historically, how does this compare to previous years? Um, you can see that over the past three years, we've had, um, you know, capital is a much more significant part of the budget. Remodel project was a big part of that. Some of the road projects were part of that, that we are getting back to more of a, a, a normal trend line of where, um, of how those three different, or four different categories break out. Of course, capital is variable, so we always take a look at how does, how do these compare with the operating budget. Um, you know, personnel cost is the, the biggest share of our budget. Fifty-seven percent of the total operating budget is personnel costs. But you can see that's pretty well in line with where we've been for the past several years and so, uh, we aren't seeing a big spike in our personnel costs. We do transfer funds, uh, transfer money between funds for, the biggest chunk is to the parks fund. Uh, rather than levying money directly into the parks fund, we levy money into the general revenue fund and then transfer it into the parks fund. Uh, additionally, we have a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars that's going to capital projects for improvements at the, um, uh, at the Justice Center and two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that's coming from the Government Center Fund for improvements to this building here. Those go into the capital projects fund that are expended out in there. Uh, the levy adjustment, um, kind of the, the headline of the day is that we are looking at a nine point one-six percent levy increase. Uh, when we were at the, um, the work session a couple of weeks ago, uh, we were at around a nine point four percent. So the, the changes that we made have reduced that a little bit, but we're looking at nineteen million dollars, uh, of total levy. We are using fund balance to, um, uh, to take care of some certain expenses and to, um, to especially address some of the one-time expenses that we are seeing. Just shy of six hundred thousand of that is coming out of the general fund, three hundred thousand in human services, uh, forty-three thousand in parks. That just covers a portion of the, um, the new playground that was being proposed. Uh, some out of the Government Center Fund, um, Capital Projects Fund, that, uh, a portion of that or all of that covers a portion of the parking lot resurfacing costs for the Justice Center. And then the debt service, two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. This is the final payment of the 2021 refunding bond. Once we are finished with that, we shouldn't see cash coming out of the debt service fund going forward. So good news on that front. When we look at the five hundred and forty thousand dollars of general revenue fund, the unrestricted piece, um, you notice that number is slightly different than what I showed you on the previous slide. The difference there is, um, the restricted funds that we use for AIS prevention. So in here, uh, these one-time expenses that we have are, uh, election equipment for Ellsworth Township, now that they're going back to in-person balloting. Uh, replacement of a squad, associated equipment with that squad, um, boat, vehicle and equipment for boat and water patrol, replacing a thirty-year-old boat. Replacement of rooftop unit, um, number one over at the Justice Center. Uh, kind of continued project that we have of, um, upgrading lighting to LEDs, uh, replacing other, um, HVAC units for the jail, adding digital controls. And then, uh, we have a capital contribution to the Ag Society of seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, which is fronting two years of payments. And then the agreement is that they won't ask for two years beyond that. So four years of no additional capital contributions after we've made this. In the end, uh, when we look at, um, our percentage of, uh, estimated fund balance as a percentage of operating expenditures, we're at, uh, fifty-eight percent, which is in excess of 50%, which is our goal. So we're still in a really solid position there. Um, and with that, my recommendation is that you approve the resolution in your packet establishing the preliminary levy. I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Andrew?
I feel like I've talked about budget, so.
That sounds like cause you have.
Well, we appreciate the budget committee and, and all of the department heads and, and for their work on this. This is one of those unique years, followed by another unique year, potentially. So thank you all for, for what you do.
Challenging. I mean, it's challenging throughout the state. I mean, every county out there is, you know, I, I think so. There are some lower ones out there proposed, but I, I don't know that they're, um, anticipating or, or predicting what's coming next year. But there's a lot of them, a lot of them that are in our same area as far as, uh, percentage of increase, so.
Yeah, the other day at MRC, I wrote down, as they went around the room, and, uh, a lot of nine, over nine and a half. Uh, there's an eleven, eleven.
Fourteen.
Fourteen point six, eleven point five and ten point five. And those are the higher-end ones. And you guys are welcome to take a look at this, but I just jotted it down as they were going around the room saying what their projected preliminary levy would be. There was also, um, a couple of three percent, five percent.
Heard some of those too.
Four point six, so, um, but then.
Who are these counties?
Can we talk to?
But it leaves you a lot of question. Are they looking to the?
Are they preparing for what is coming down the pipeline?
Front-loaded there had been much higher increases in the past.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kinda hurt us in these amounts because we've been so good about keeping it down that now we were, you know, we're paying the piper almost on it.
It's a, yeah, I, I think, um, I know there's some that already were looking last year and were a little higher last year to offset some of what they thought was coming. You know, and it's, every county has different circumstances. So I mean, it's where you, what your discussion is at, at the time of your budget, you know, and, and so there's some of that and then there's some that are hoping things get a lot better next year, which we're, we're somewhere in the middle of that.
They, they treated me, these guys, it was Danny and, uh, Steve, treated Andrew and I in our first year here to, wasn't it a one point five?
It just settled in?
Levy.
Which I actually argued against a little bit because I thought, because I was worried, I've always been worried about the out years, but it's here. I thought it was gonna be here earlier, but it's here now.
I interrupted you.
No, and what I just wanna say, what I think is vital, is that we, um, relay this to the public. How did we get here? And Andrew has put together, uh, a letter or, you know, some, um, some ways that we can explain how we got here. And, um, I, uh, one additional question that I'm hearing from people is, well, if there is a five percent or a nine percent or whatever the levy is, what does that mean to me? And they want to know what that looks like on their taxes. Do, is, are my taxes going up nine percent? No, that's not how this works. And so an explanation of what that looks like to the individual taxpayer, I think, um, would be valuable. I think they would greatly appreciate that. The average home price in this area is between, I, I believe it's around two eighty to three hundred thousand. If that is, and that would need to be confirmed, but whatever the average price of a home is here, what does that look like for me on my tax bill? And I think that's the bottom line that people wanna know because, um, that nine point one-six, that doesn't really register with them. So that would be what I, where I feel like we need to go.
So didn't they have a figure, eighty dollars or something?
Um, yeah, that's, that's about what we had come up with before, but well, we can, we can run something again. Um, but of course, as a reminder, everyone will get their individualized version of that with their truth and taxation notice.
Yes.
And the city, I see pass, is passing what, seven point five?
I do not see what the city.
It's a lot. Cause we are just a piece.
Gonna be a lot.
It is gonna be a great one. It's all said and done, so. Yep. So just more warnings sometimes is a little helpful, but I really appreciate what you put together. Thank you.
The commissioner's corner in, um, the upcoming newsletter is gonna be solely focused on the budget and the challenges that we're facing. Uh, in the packet was, um, a one-sheet that provides information about all of that, that, um, you're more than welcome to share with constituents if they have questions, uh, or would like some more information. Um, we've, uh, I, I took some time when I was on the Newsmaker program recently to talk through these issues and we're gonna continue to, to seek avenues to be able to communicate with the public.
Is that, is that something that we can share even on social media?
Absolutely.
The budgeting in challenging times?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
And, and just a reminder that we've all agreed that starting the first of the year, we're gonna watch things that come through and that's when we're gonna start trying to make cuts where we can, because it can't be put on the budget committee and then, right, I just. Well, they're not doing it, so we're gonna have to, we have to keep reminding ourselves of that.
Some of the challenges we had this year was, you had a late state session followed by a federal, uh, Fourth of July. I mean, there wasn't a whole lot of time between state, federal and preliminary budget to make huge changes or.
Right.
Add it off. We do have a, you know, we're hoping for better news next year, um, so we have something to work with, to cut with too. I mean, that was some of the challenges this year, so. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt a resolution establishing the 2026 preliminary levy.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Commissioner Van Art. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Corey, would you please take the roll? Hearing none, Corey, would you please take the roll?
Commissioner Van Orte?
Yes.
Commissioner Samke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Motion with the resolution passes. Administrators report.
I just want to take a moment real quick.
Can we take five?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
That's very timely on your part.
All right, we're on.
As we resume, we'll start out with County Administrator Andrew Lutson's report.
If I may just have a moment, I just, I just wanted to once again give a heartfelt thanks to all of our department heads, elected officials, all of you for the engagement throughout the budget process. I, we've all had some sleepless nights about this one. As we've all said multiple times, this is probably the most challenging budget that, certainly that I've dealt with since I've been here. So I sincerely appreciate everyone's engagement with it. We've had great partners talking about all of this stuff and so kudos to everyone, so thank you all. Looking forward, we do have a work session scheduled for next Tuesday. As I mentioned before, we're going to talk about local option sales tax, Phil's going to give a presentation about that. And Heather is going to give a presentation, get some feedback on some, some ideas that she has to to improve some efficiency of their office and some of that involves some of you as well, so we want to hear your presentation next week. Lastly, as a reminder, Commissioner Johnson, you had asked me this question last week when we were at the Fall Policy Conference. I now have an answer for you. AMC's Fall District Meeting is going to be on October twentieth in Kennebec County, Monday, October twentieth in Kennebec County.
Do you know what town?
Would that be Mora?
What?
Is it Kennebec or Kennebec?
It's Kennebec.
It's it's Kennebec?
It's Kennebec.
You're kind of butchered it.
Cannabis County?
I used to live on the border of a Malax and Kennebec, so.
Well.
I believe is Mora their county seat? I am not sure.
Mora, I believe, is the county seat, so.
It's been a few years.
That's your old neighborhood, right?
That's my old, yes, yeah, Malax Coney, uh huh, yep.
So that's just the one date.
And a nine o'clock start.
I think it's eight, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Yes, like eight to noon typically is what it is. It's the, that meeting is the one where you all have an opportunity to vote on priorities for, for the AMC priorities for the next legislative session and then AMC board adopts that and then ultimately the membership adopts it at the end. That is the conclusion of my report and my butchering of other county names.
Thank you. We'll move down to Commissioner Schmidt, he'll start us off.
Yes, since last board meeting, I had a one watershed or the Mr. Skew, is it Mississippi River?
Yeah.
Right, right, right next door, right in the room next door. Uh, North Fork at a crow.
North Fork of the Crow, yeah.
Yeah. And I had some projects going on there that they walked through. There was also, I was in Grove City that night for their, for their board meeting as well, their city council meeting. Just talk about levy impacts at a county and just kind of get a good understanding from a county perspective and their city perspective, what, you know, give them a broader perspective of what's going on and how that may impact their residents. It was a good meeting, actually a very good meeting. And I was also in Grove City to have their township, they meet with the city, the townships and their fire department once a year, so they're for their annual meeting for that as well. Just to go over budgets and, you know, how much they are going to, how they're, how to divvy up and some of their structure with the fire and their district there, so. And we're the two Grove City things, um, extension, we had an extension meeting, we also followed that up. We had an investment meeting here on the ninth. Extension, a lot of good projects going on there. You know, they, they do a good, I think we get a lot of value for the dollars that we spend on extension, the outreach, whether it be the youth through 4H and FFAs and things like that and their, their partnership with extension for a lot of educational materials. I just, the value there is, is, is something that we probably, hard to find in in government of any kind, the type of value that we get for, I think it'd be hard to match. And then we had Fall Policy Conference last week up in Alexandria. You know, everybody set their priorities and and their platform items. We will be looking at them about the first October as an executive board and then, so they're set or any fine tuning we need to do before our districts, before they come to the broader group, so. I think it was a good conference, I think it was well attended, seemed to be full, I mean, fuller than seen in the past, so that was good. Also the MRC meeting. And Capitol Hill and Associates does a good job representing them. There was actually, there's some discussion I had a text this morning, early, there's seven or eight more counties. They did add two counties, I think they're at forty six or seven right now. And they got another six or seven that are interested, so, so some growth there. Other than that, I do not have a whole lot, this is one of my quieter weeks in a while. I do have a reentry services meeting, a Zoom meeting on on Thursday morning at nine o'clock. But other than that, just a lot of discussion. I'll be on Hotch Radio tomorrow morning, I do eight o'clock on the third Wednesday of the month, so I'm sure we'll be talking county budgets there a little bit and and stuff, so. We'll continue to to work on that. Also, I want to say on the Fall Policy Conference, Kristen and and Tina did a presentation in that Health and Human Services area and I've been tasked to step away from public safety a little bit and spend more time in that arena just because of all the pressure and impacts around that, so I'll be learning more there as we go, so. Other than that, I was supposed to go down and testify Thursday morning. I had a Senate Committee Hearing that has been canceled and that was on, I think that was, I don't even know the topic. I just met Hilgarth and Julie pulled me aside and said, clear your calendar for Thursday morning, but then it got canceled yesterday. But I believe it was with Health and Human Services topics as well. Other than that, that's all I had.
Aaron.
Oh, man, I was with Steve at the North Fork Crow River Watershed Authority meeting. Again, you know, I think they do good, good project, projects that are kind of helpful and, but again, I I just brought up one of those things that we're concerned about. Just, I had a constituent basically concerned about the flooding on the Crow River up there and anytime we get some significant rain, that his comment was, it seems like the Crow River is just a big drainage ditch for the entire area and everything just keeps flooding. And and so we just discussed, I even brought up, you know, adding, are there ways that we can mitigate that and have more areas where wetlands and slow things down and, and, you know, they were like, oh, yeah, you know, that's definitely something that we should be looking at. I'm like, okay, good. So, you know, that was that big thing and then the AMC conference, I just want to report on that. I spent the entire time in the environment and natural resources area and their main focus was solid waste area disposal and dealing with all that, since everybody seems to be having that as a major priority. And we, there was the big discussion was, are we going to, there was a fairly strong sentiment from a few people that that wanted to be our sole focus, to get everything else, just really want to focus on that, to try to make sure that makes the final cut. But then there was the other folks who were like, you know what, that's putting all our eggs in one basket and maybe we need to to spread out just to make sure that we have other priorities like in the menu, if you will, that is included in all of the, when we're sorting out the the priorities. And that was, that was interesting. And I got to confess that the whole solid waste was a little nebulous to me in terms of even exactly what their proposals were hoping to do. I know that they wanted to do some changes in how the legislator, legislature funded a lot of the the mandates as well as dealing with all of the the construction and demolition site issues. I'm not sure what kind of progress we'd be able to make on that anyway. But the the other one I thought that was really interesting was the, the urging of the repeal of the the nuclear moratorium because to do anything nuclear is going to be ten years down the road if we don't get started on doing anything and nobody's going to do any investment if they have no idea, if if the moratorium's in place. No company is going to say, well, let's put some money into starting this process if we don't know what the state's going to allow down the road. And so that was kind of a major eye opener for me too and and just the fact that they want to have, I have always said this, is that if you do not include, if you want carbon free energy and you don't include nuclear in your proposals and in your thought process, you're not serious about it. Because nuclear is the only thing that's going to be consistent in term, you know, when you compare it to wind and solar, you know, sun doesn't always shine and the wind doesn't always blow.
And where, where along the way did I hear, maybe somebody was in a meeting that I was too, but the waste of nuclear, there, the rods, there's all kinds of nuclear rods and storage, which at that, at the time they're put in storage, they're still got eighty five percent of energy in it. But the new nuclear will take that down to fifteen percent. So we basically have a lot of energy in storage, storage available, that could be brought down when then it, and then it can be disposed of.
And the data centers as well require a huge amount of energy that could not be sustained through solar, wind and the, and the, the infrastructure that we have in place. And so those can be a major revenue source, those data centers, they, they're looking at ways they could potentially tax that. And so as you're seeing, those, that nuclear piece needs to be addressed so that there's enough energy to support that business model.
The mini, the mini-nuclares are a huge power source on a small footprint.
Yes.
And, you know, just in terms of whether you're talking cooling of those data centers with water needs as well as water needs for nuclear, which is another environmental issue, but also the waste in terms of, you know, your solar panels, which were taking up acres and acres and, you know, they only have a thirty or forty year lifespan that they, that stuff's got to go somewhere. Whereas you look at, it was an interesting graphic where they talked about land space needed for wind and solar compared to the nuclear and the waste produced, you've got all those panels, you've got all those wind turbines that don't, that have a limited lifespan and they were comparing the amount of, of waste and necessity for, you know, getting rid of at the end of life per like hundred megawatts or something, it was ridiculous that, you know, they compared it to a football field and it was like, the, the solar was like sixty yards of the field, the, the wind was like thirty yards and then the, the nuclear was like three inches, you know, in terms of the graphically depicting the need. And then some of the waste of, of the nuclear was like, compared to like so many tons, that the nuclear weight was three, three and a half ounces, you know, that produced the same amount to as tons of either coal or some of the other sources. And so it was just a really enlightening thing and if we ever have an opportunity to to push for the moratorium to be lifted so that we can actually make some progress, realizing that it's going to be a ten year window to get anything done, that just seems to me to be, you know, one of those prudent things.
Which I always find that amazing that somebody put on a moratorium and even if it's lifted, you still have another ten years. I mean, the thought process behind that, it sounds very political even.
Oh, for sure, for sure. The other thing that they talked about, which I thought was really interesting, was solid waste management districts. I don't know how familiar you are with that, it's almost like your joint powers kind of situations, but it was nice to hear how those, those wastes, you know, the solid waste management districts would actually be separate entities that would relieve the counties of liability and a lot of other concerns that would be kind of off our plate and the, the solid waste districts responsibility.
I think you're, to your solid waste, the biggest issue there, I think, is the state hasn't, doesn't know what it's going to do. And I think that makes it very hard for any solid waste discussion to be fruitful and where do you go with a county level when the state doesn't know where they're at? And that's been for multiple years already. I mean, that's why you got, I always pick on Renville, I'm going to pick Renville, but they've been operating without a permit for twenty years. I mean, and the state knows it and it's like, oh, just keep doing what you're doing, but we're going to change some, but we don't know what it's going to be yet. That makes it very hard to plan and that's been a challenge for multiple years.
Well, I think Andrew, wasn't it you and I sitting at the table, table when they were talking about the number of employees that work in the permitting section and the number of permit requests they get? What was it?
I don't remember the numbers.
I don't remember, it's low, very low, you'd think, all right, you got eight people to handle eighty requests, each one gets ten, you ought to be able to get those done.
Probably still working from home, there's cold, you know.
Anyway, that's, I've taken enough time, but.
I was gonna, I was gonna back up my, my talk here before on 4H. They had three hundred and seventy eight youth involved in Meeker this year and a hundred and twenty adult volunteers and seventeen hundred and ninety exhibits.
Yeah, now you took some of Cheryl's report away.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, I'll take less time then, am I up?
You are up.
I was really, I, I went to the extension meeting as well and I love to hear their reports on how many children are involved and they do daycare camps during the summer and yes, my note said three hundred and seventy eight Meeker County kids were involved in 4H. One other thing that as I was sitting and they were talking about how they want to help kids be involved, I wrote down on my paper lamp kinship because they have opportunity through 4H to be somewhat of a mentor to children and it's a great opportunity for them to connect and learn skills. And so then that was also brought up, she said, well, we, we have connected with the lamp and I'm like, okay. So that they aren't, they are working together and not separately and duplicating something that they could benefit working together. So I really liked hearing that. As far as the AMC conference went, the biggest highlight for me was the IT situation that we've all talked about over and over with Health and Human Services, Social Services, that this isn't a years long issue, it's a decades long issue. And they went through a process, while they were speaking, someone was trying to register, I believe. It took them so long and they just, they also did a demonstration on if they simply want to change an address and it was ridiculous.
The nine minute long video to change an address?
It was absolutely ridiculous and so for me, and one, and and at, at the end of the conference, we talked about priorities. For me, the biggest priority that would help us all save the most amount of money, be more efficient, be more accurate, use less employee time, would be to update that. And it seems like the process goes on and on and it is never solved. And several people said to me, somebody's got to have an eighteen year old kid that can create this software. And so for me, that was the biggest issue that we saw. Also, you know, things that Also, you know, things that Darren has already talked about and Andrew gave a great presentation about how we have reduced our child placement in Meeker County and I think that should also be of interest. I did spend some time talking with a private vendor on software they have for that situation as well, but you know, we, the state needs to come up with IT and software that, that is more efficient. I, I was amazed, there are six different silos. I had no idea how, how, I've never seen anything like this. So, so other than that, went to just general government meetings, we talked about probation, cannabis and property taxes and, you know, just, it was very educational, general government. So that's it.
Something I was going to mention, Paul, Representative Turkelson did say too that hopefully new software would be out by twenty twenty-six is what they're, he said that's optimistic.
Right, to keep putting on more and more and more requirements on the county, but not providing the means to do so is backwards.
What I heard a few years ago when I was at, when I was on Health and Human Services, which Paul is doing now, but they just need to scrap the whole system.
Yes.
Start over and it's millions and millions of dollars and nobody want, and they've spent millions and millions of dollars with their buddies trying to fix things and how's it working? It's not, so it's, there's no easy answer. Somebody's going to have to spend a lot of money.
If there was one priority that would, would save, again, I've already said, that would save our, our employees' time and make them more efficient and it would be that. It would save the county's money. So, that being said, next.
Well, I wasn't at AMC, so it sounds like I missed a lot, but so I was at an investment meeting with Steve, Tyler, Heather, Andrew and I. Ellers presented their management company for finances that have some good ideas, I think. They're going to review some policies and see, I think Heather and Tyler are going to be doing some meetings on that to see. We have separate, separate tax ideas, so how much do we have to be involved between the hospital and county? So that was one day I had that. And I had, goodness, where's my, I had a governing board exec meeting yesterday, I believe it was at the hospital. They, we went over, they had their survey for their certification through Minnesota Department of Health. It's about a three-day, plenty of people come in from the state and look at a lot of records and maybe even talk to patients, things like that. So we had a presentation on that. We hadn't had one for, don't quote me, but six to eight years. So obviously there was some things, but there was nothing major. The staff did a wonderful job and now they'll use it for knowledge to improve where they have to improve. So that was all good. We talked about the, we had a building project update, more of the numbers are coming in. We went over a presentation that we'll be doing at the board meeting. So that's coming up in September. The auditors will be there at that time. They've been going over some scenarios, worst, best, and maybe here's what happened, so we consider what we're spending, what we could lose, how we can still do it. I also had a phone call with the auditors, I always do because I'm chair and we just kind of got in the discussion and he was very impressed with the great financial condition that our rural hospital is in. So had no qualms whatsoever about us building a clinic, so more to come on that. I think, I feel like I had something else, but that's all I have right now unless it comes to my mind.
You're going to remember one right away when I start. Prime West, we had a meeting.
I got Prime West.
And Jim at a previous meeting, Jim Persbilla had announced he was retiring, which was a great concern, I think, for the entire board because he has led a magnificent organization that is, well, just to give you an idea, cash balance at the end of July is a hundred and forty-four point nine million dollars. So we're in good financial position. The selection committee had made a, made a recommendation to the full board and that was of Matt Magnuson. He's been a longtime employee there. He has been in their succession planning. I've, I've always believed that past performance predicts future performance and based on Matt's past performance, I think they have selected a great candidate too.
We must have assumed I was going to miss that report because you're already with it.
Well, that's my first one though. So that was, everybody was, was on board, it was unanimous decision to put Matt in that position and he will assume that position next June first. And in the meantime, they'll prep somebody for his position, may have an internal candidate, may not. And then after that one is, is filled, they will move to, Jim and Matt will work together to really get him in line with what we do and make sure that it's a nice smooth transition next year. So just a reminder, we own Prime West as one of the twenty-four counties that own it. So yeah, that was, that was an important, important selection, so very pleased about that.
They also won the lawsuit, you could talk about that a little bit.
Oh, yes, yeah. We won the lawsuit, so now it's going to be, it's down to how's it going to be implemented? So, because we also have Karma. So we have two things going at the same time because Karma passed and that's County Administered Rural Medical Assistance. But the impact, if a judge says no, January one, twenty twenty-six, single plan in all of the counties. How many thousand did it say we would jump in enrollment?
I don't have it, I can't believe I don't have that with me, but I don't.
Yeah, so here we are in September and if the judge rules no, you're going to implement January first of twenty twenty-six, we're going to have to staff up very quickly and be ready for what could happen January first. I think, I kind of get the impression they would like to see it start January twenty twenty.
I think that's probably when it will start is in twenty-seven.
That way everybody has time to position themselves, but I think that was really good. We had a nice update on that. Yeah, we've spent, how long waiting for that answer, two years? Probably two years, yeah.
Our attorney thought when they appealed it, they shouldn't have, they, you know, they didn't have ground and that's what they said, they said they shouldn't be here.
So we went through all the steps, ended up at the State Supreme Court, that's where the final decision was.
Forever.
Unfortunately, we spent a lot of money in.
And we have a lot of money, but we're still going through some trying times. We're having some high usage, we're having some big bills and we're showing some losses. Like I haven't, and I'm not trying to scare anybody, but I haven't seen those since I've been on there for a lot of years and not discussions like that before. I mean, they redid the budget even two months ago because I run finance too and I have all the confidence in the world it's going to be fine, but you know, again, there's so much unknown with Medicaid and so they're dealing with the same thing that we're dealing, we're dealing with. And they really think in the numbers we saw that Medicaid part is only going to probably affect ten percent of the Medicaid population, so we're going to all this trouble and is it, you know, where they're going to reapply twice and so there's just, there's just a lot of unknown out there. But I have, as Paul does, I have all, I think they made a good choice with Matt, he's been there a long time, we all know Matt and he'll be fine. They don't know who's going to do the private insurance part.
So can we talk about Kaiser or was that, that was open session, wasn't it?
I don't think we should talk about that.
I think we did talk about it open, but anyway, so that was Prime West. Then I had a PAC meeting prior to, the same day as the AMC meeting. They have two grants which they desperately depend on. It's, one of them is the Journey to Independence, which we have young folks as learn to be on their own and work back to everything. We don't, it appears that we don't have the grant as of right now, we may not get it. That would cause us to have to potentially lay off fourteen people. The fear is we lay off the fourteen people and then we get the grant, we won't get those people back.
What is it grand for?
The Journey to Independence was one of them. I don't know that.
Is that, I mean, what is it, what is Journey to Independence?
Okay, that's where you take a young person who has been in a bad situation, maybe at home or whatever, has been in foster care or something and they work with this individual to bring them back on their own.
And they have, don't they have a lot of money back? I thought you said at one time they had a lot.
We're okay, but now you start taking away a one point two million dollar grant. That changes how okay you are in a big walk on a very.
I think it goes back to the same conversation the sport had, there's going to be cuts and everybody's going to be happy. I mean, everybody has their favorite things, right?
So the grant is, if we're going to get the grant, we should be notified no later than September thirtieth, so.
So then they lay him off by the first.
We had to give a thirty day notice, so they've already been given that. We do have some reserves, so we have elected to keep it going for two months, just in case because these grants have a tendency to come through late. We don't want to have everybody laid off and do that. So we made that decision as a board. And then I went in to the main PAC meeting and they had presenter talk about something that they, they do, it's called rebalance. And what it does, and I'll just read you the quick definition, it's a specialized holistic trauma-informed intervention program designed for all young individuals and especially effective with young individuals who may have encountered notable changes in their Just to give you an example, seventy-eight percent of the ones who went through it learned self-confidence skills. Eighty-six percent learned control of actions and thoughts. So when somebody's having a bad thought, they redirect. We see it especially in the elementary. This is for older, older folks, you know, that fourteen, fifteen, sixteen age. Eighty-six percent increased awareness of others, seventy-six percent improved decision-making skills and eighty percent learned relationship-building skills. So very important thing, Youth for Christ and Wilmer was the presenter of this, but just, just found it interesting to listen to. He had a short fifteen minute presentation and you know, there are so many things that are going on out there with the young people and mental health that we don't even know about. I didn't know about this and never heard of it, so it was interesting to learn. Then on to AMC and yes, I'm on the Health and Human Services. Yes, a, a big discussion surrounded the IT, but sometimes it's those table discussions that you have. We were sitting there talking with Ron Antony, Andrew and I were from Yellow Medicine and he was telling us about something their board just, just approved. It was called the Data Depot. And we just got the information yesterday, Andrew and I, so I'm not going to go into it. That's the beauty of having the windows open. Going to great detail because I don't have the detail to share with you, but they were very excited about it because it was going to help cut down on the amount of time, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, it's going to cut down on the amount of time on that re-entry.
That's what I understood is that it was going to help us.
But we're going to get some more information on that. Cost-wise was very inexpensive, but it looked like it might be a solid workaround until it's fixed. It may save a significant amount of money, so.
What was that, say?
Data Depot it's called.
And it was to work around what though?
The SSIS.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Antony thought it was SSIS.
Oh, okay.
The company made a presentation to Yellow Medicine Board of Commissioners and Rayanne is their Health and Human Services Director, she shared it with Andrew and I yesterday. Kina already had it the way it looks, so she was aware of it also, but it's the.
Was it, was it Binti?
What's that?
Binti?
Binti?
That's, it's not that.
It's a different, it's a different, okay.
Yep, Data Depot. So anyway, that's, that was thing. And then just a tidbit, I did not realize, I was talking to a policeman from, used to be a policeman in Red Wing, he's now, lives in Jacksons County Commissioner. I did not know that the city limits of Red Wing included all the area around Treasure Island and the tribal area. Did not know that. And he said, well, he says, got to look at it this way, because of that, they get eighteen million dollars a year from, because that encompasses the nuclear power plant. So that's eighteen million dollars going to their budget because they annexed all that land in, so. It was just an interesting little thing he had to say.
They had eighteen million from Treasure Island?
Not from Treasure Island, no, no, from the power plant.
From who?
The power plant.
Ah.
So, and then lastly, we did very well in beanbags.
He's looking at you again, Andrew.
Well, we didn't, we didn't do so well.
Because Andrew wasn't there.
We were fifty-fifty.
We did, we did.
Did you throw a show? Is that what you guys do when you?
We didn't buy any points, we didn't fancy.
No.
And we went five hundred and we lost two games by one point.
Just think if you had to spend some money and bought some points.
And I still think it was the addition, Mary Jo's guy was using some creative addition on that one.
There was some, some creative bookkeeping on, on one of those score sheets.
So, and they did very, very well at their foundation fundraiser, you're on the board, did you ever hear the dollars they brought in?
No. They announced it was over thirteen thousand.
It was thirteen.
Over thirteen.
Nice. So one of the sponsors or, they're not sponsored, they are, one of our premier partners, bought a lot of stuff at the auction, turned around, donated it back to be resold, so.
That was some expensive salsa.
Yeah, that was expensive.
Seven hundred dollars a jar.
Yep.
So that's it for me. So is there any other business to come before us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a question. I got an email from Eric Day from the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission, we've got a meeting coming up and he was expressing that we've got, and I don't know what the, you know, he was talking about them, you know, putting a card together because they're talking about Laurel and Smudge Schmeling down in Cosmos who's resigned because he had a major stroke and stuff going on. So he just had some concerns or concerns, but just, you know, an update on his condition and he's a Meeker County guy and I don't know if we would consider, you know, putting a card together to say, you know, wishing you the best, we appreciate your service. I know he was on the township committee, but I figured since he was a Meeker County gentleman who's served us in that capacity, if we could maybe consider just, I don't know if we have any like cards in the stock or anything like that that we could sign or something.
We'll get that for you.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to recognize him and just kind of.
Oh, he's served on multiple things.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Oh, he might have even been on EDA at one time.
I think his wife is active too. She serves on a committee or two for us also.
But yeah, he's in a, where is he? Someplace in Hutch, I want to say, doing rehab, doing much, doing very well, I can just, the note that Eric shared was dad had a massive stroke and is at the Harmony River in Hutchinson receiving therapies. He has made tremendous progress and surpassed what the doctors told us. He looks great and has regained mobility. The bummer is the loss of speech with severe aphasia. We are hearing new words all the time and we're grateful dad uses inflection and facial expressions. He was a theater major. Visitors are welcome if anyone would like to stop by even for a short time. My mom moved off the farm last weekend to a twin home in Hutch. Our family has experienced a vast amount of change in two months, thanks for inquiring. And so that's just kind of an, an update, but I don't know, I didn't know if it would, you know, if it might be a nice gesture on our part to send him a little card.
Perhaps we can have one ready, we can all. Perhaps we can have one ready. We can all sign next Tuesday at the work session.
So, thank you.
Actual signatures on it. Is there anything else? Here ain't no further business. We are adjourned.